Let's fire up a school board meeting. Andy, you got a huge head. All right, starting. Condo Order 627, Sunnyside School District School Board Meeting, Wednesday, January 13th, 2021, in the SMHS Gymnasium. A call to order with a roll call. Let's start on the far side with Mr. Houston in the house.
Walt Houston, Principal, Sunnyside Central Elementary School.
Sean Moynihan, Principal, Sunnyside Middle High School.
Megan Mead, Assistant Principal, Sunnyside Middle High School.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Carrie McCall, Class School Board.
Scott Rix, Senior School Board.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Russell Holton, Superintendent.
Kelly, you're still technically in line. Okay. Sorry about that. And Andy?
Andy, National School Board.
Thanks for the audio, thank you. We're rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Goodbye, United States of America, and to your republic, which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, the living, and just as for all.
Thank you very much. Let's just jump right in to running behind by half an hour. Let's jump right into, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the December 16th, 2020 School Board Meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 16th, 2020 School Board Meeting.
Second for discussion.
I'll second.
Ed, thank you. Any comments, corrections?
Yeah, I got a couple things here I wanted to make note of. One, in the SIC presentation where Jeremiah presented, I'd like to have the minutes updated to reflect that Jeremiah had taken the action to meet with the Fire, the State Fire Marshal
Oh, yeah.
and the local Fire Chief to review the proposal because there was some misalignment from what had been presented versus what was in the proposal. And my understanding is they're fully aligned with what's now proposed.
Yep.
Jeremiah's report, also what he shared.
Do you need a second to get, let that be counted? What's that?
So just watch this, ready, some clarification to, on page three, Carrie's presentation.
Yep, page three.
Jeremiah from Benwell, go to the following.
Yep.
Okay, one correction.
Just to note that they agree with the proposal.
Great.
Yep, on page four, it talked about yourself, Russ, and Jesse, meeting with John Selectman. It has January 28th, that was December 28th.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
And I don't know if this is critical or not, on page six, when we talk about the taxi impact of the project, the building project, it says 18 cents. For clarity, it would probably be helpful to say that it was 18 cents in the first year.
At the top of page six.
Just guessing.
One thing I want to say is I have a meeting minutes on the log back, because it's very dark now, but being that the fact that I have to do it most of the time, it's been very, very difficult to hear all the pieces and all the events, especially recitals and pretty about moving the video to our people talking, but I usually miss the first sentence that they're saying due to hearing other sounders and stuff. So I'm glad to start missing some things just because I really can't hear. And sometimes people keep talking with their masks on, and I'm going, if.
Sure. Yep.
I just, I just.
Yeah, it is rare for us to have to amend any of your notes. So between being remote and listening to people with masks on, it'd be amazing if we didn't have to add a couple twists to it.
Absolutely. If you have a hard time with your mind, try to touch your hand, but you get it.
Absolute confidence that you do. Yes.
Other than that.
Yeah. Okay. Scott? Andy? Ed, Scott?
Bottom of page four, just, you know, where I was speaking of funding alternatives and, you know, that sort of a thing. I was speaking specifically about the athletic, you know, fields and the athletic facilities.
So consider funding alternatives to athletic fields?
For the athletic fields and.
Yeah. Ed? Andy, all set?
No, all set, thank you.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the December 16th School Board Meeting minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All right?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the December 28th, 2020 CIP Meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 28th, 2020 meeting.
Andy, I'm looking at your big head for a second. All right?
I'll second it.
Comment, any correction or addition? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes of the December 28th, 2020 CIP Meeting, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Round and the horn, second half, minutes of the December 29th, 2020 Policy Meeting. Staring at you, Scott Gitzman.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Policy Meeting, how long, December 29th, 2020.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ed. Any additions, amendments, commentary? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the December 29th, 2020 Policy Meeting notes as presented, please say aye.
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 Thank you, sir. Last one. Looking for motion to approve minutes of the January 7th, 2021 CIP Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2021 CIP Meeting.
Nice.
I'll second.
Quick second by Carrie. Any addition or comment from Andy or Carrie as the CIP? You happy? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes for the January 7th CIP Meeting, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
In the house. All right. Gender review. I want to add a board correspondence as a 12.5, so one minor addition. Anything that you want to add?
No, we have good time here.
Anything else on people's minds? All right. I am now. 12.5 board correspondence. Number four, we are at public forum in accordance with policy BE, BH. We have, you have three minutes to speak. There's a second public opportunity at the end of the meeting. Anyone not seeing any motion? All right. Start over. Deliberative, deliberately deliberative session overview. We have Aaron Simpson as our guest speaker.
So unfortunately, I thought through whatever it is, we put, we gave out the link. I don't have any, double check, don't have any email saying that. He's trying to get in or can't get in or isn't coming. So why don't we do this, why don't we just go through this app and Eric pops up, maybe we can dump him off, doesn't come in, but he was invited and didn't respond that he was coming.
Yeah.
You know, we've shared.
Yeah, he was great in the discussion in the select board meeting, so we'll hope that he's able to join us and we'll pop him back in as soon as he's ready. So let's keep trucking. We are at item six on the agenda, starting with the school updates from the elementary school, Mr. Houston.
So a couple things. One, after correcting our superintendent, earlier he said that we had five new students at the elementary school. By the end of the month, we will have a total of nine students. We had five that, new students that came back to us or came to us after break. We have a new student arriving next Tuesday, we have two arriving on January 25th, and we have one arriving on February 1st. So here's a total of nine new students at the elementary school. I went and borrowed the no vacancy sign from John that we put up on the school to say no more roam, because we are literally bursting at the seams. So that's where we are for enrollment. Couple things, we are this year doing things a little different in terms of assessment. We normally don't do a mid-year assessment with the NWS, but because of what happened last spring and wanting to keep track of the progress of our students, we will be doing the NWS for math for all students. Will be continuing with our final, we normally do that anyway mid-year. And then midterm progress reports are going home this next Friday, the 22nd. And that again, keeping parents up to date of what's happening with progress. One of our challenges that we continue to have this year is still keeping our traditions alive, but having to rethink them. Over the holiday season, we've had with Christmas and Hanukkah and all the rest of them, and our staff did an incredible job rethinking the holidays. And I want to just give a shout out to our food service program. One of the challenges we have in an elementary school is that holidays are important to us. Halloween, we have the Halloween party, Christmas, we have a Christmas party, Valentine's Day, we have a Valentine's Day party. And this year we have not been able to do that because we're not allowed to bring in outside food. So our food service has stepped up and they provide snacks for the kids. And they did that for Halloween. For Christmas, they made cupcakes and gave out ice cream. We're already starting to think ahead about what we need to do for Valentine's Day. Bob and his staff have done an incredible job, so I want to give them a shout out for helping us. Spelling bee season is upon us, the fourth and fifth grade spelling bee will be the last week in January. And again, we have to rethink of how we do this, because normally we have parents coming into the building and being part of that tradition, and we can't do that this year. So we'll be doing it either Zoom or sending out the Google Meet address so parents can, wherever they are, be at work or home or in the car, they can be watching along with the spelling bee. The fifth graders have started their annual Call the Cop project, and the kindergartners, they are continuing to do raising their travel project that they've done for years. And again, just having to rethink, how do we do this? And they, the staff have risen to the challenge every single time, of how do we rethink our traditions in the midst of COVID-19? So that's what's happening at the elementary school.
Very nice. Congratulations on so many more kids. I was wondering where I'm going to put them, so I like the kind of humorous spin and the warm welcome. Middle High School update, please.
Last we met was before, just before the holiday break, so one of the traditions we were able to keep, you know, we do a winter workshop day, the day before our holiday break, where a number of students and teachers provide workshops. We're a little more mindful this year of being socially distanced while we did it, but it was another very fun day. I know that the students really enjoy it. Again, it's nice to see them run activities, it's also nice to see them kind of branch out with some fun activities. So we were able to do that, it was a highlight, we were able to do that very similarly to previous years. Our second quarter, we moved back a little bit because we had a few fewer school days with the two days before Thanksgiving, the two days before holiday break. So with the changes for the students, we will not be changing our exams, they will still have midterm exams, those will be coming up the last week in January, so we're almost at that time. You know, I've spoken a lot of things that the kids really appreciate, anything we're able to do for them to get together, and even over the break, we continue to have book clubs. So book club met over the break, and some of our winter sports were able to continue to meet over the break, and they have their first games this week. Our steam class created an I spy activity for in the harbor in conjunction with Project Sunnyside, and over 100 elementary students were able to do that winter in the harbor. And our middle school students were able to do an animal food supply drive in the main society. So again, very busy, we do not have the numbers climbing in quite globally elementary. We had a couple kids come, a couple kids leave. I think one remote student's coming back again this semester, we had one student go from remote to homeschool, so it's, the numbers have been pretty equivalent, but it's been good. Again, as Mr. Holden said, almost, almost all our students chose to be in person, certainly over 95%. So that's where we are right now.
Awesome. All right, appreciate the updates from both. Mr. Holden, Superintendent update, please.
Sure, I'll be brief. Obviously, keeping our students and staff and our community safe is a, has been our priority, but again, as I said, I think every meeting, I continue to thank everyone for those efforts and energy that it takes to put school on every day. We are eighty plus days into it, going strong, we're marching forward somewhere, and we're, we are on our island on February, February break, that's our next goal, so that's what we're striving for. Just a little bit of an update, I talked a little bit earlier about legislation, so right now, there's 153 new LSRs Legislative Service requests, or potentially bills that have been put up this year regarding education. I mentioned the school funding report, if you haven't had an opportunity to brief it, please brief it. If you don't have a copy or you haven't had a copy of it, if you send me an email, I'll be happy to send you electronic version of it. The COVID vaccine schedule has come out, our nurses have had the opportunity to get vaccinated, teachers are group 2A, which potentially could be anywhere from March to May, and as students are group 3A, which potentially could be May, and then anywhere for 3A. So again, just really happy that we continue to be in school, doing a lot of work, obviously on budget and warrants and bonds, but at the same time, insurance safety of our kids is up my mind.
That's great. Thank you. Let's keep on moving to policy. You ready?
As I'll ever be. I guess what we first need to do is I'll make a motion to approve the policies that are listed on the agenda for free, for first reading and rescission. And if I could, when I go through my summary, I'll list out each of those just to save on repetition.
Sure, you want to motion in a second for discussion?
I'm making the motions.
I'll give you a second so that you can have the floor for explaining.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I don't get a second very often. All right.
So as always, the policies that we're discussing are listed on the website, I think they're part of the PDF behind the agenda for today's meeting. Starting with the top of the list, policies with a B basically involve board governance. You've got BGAA, Policy Development, Adoption and Review. And there's a couple down there for rescission, actually, there's three listed under the rescinded, BAAA, School Board Policies and Administrative Procedures, EFC, Policy Adoption, and BGA, Policy Development System. So basically, what's happened with these, what we're doing with these is we are taking the three policies that are being rescinded, and we're combining them into one policy, which is BGAA. So, you know, we're merging everything into one policy, I think it helps clarify a lot of the subject matter, and as always, when we make these kinds of changes, it minimizes a lot of redundancies. And so that's what's going on with those policies. We also have policy BHE, School Board Use of Email and Other Electronic Communications. So that policy has been beefed up a bit, or, you know, provides more specifics into school board use of electronic medium. And, you know, something that is important to point out, a lot of times, you know, we'll get emails that will be sent to the whole board, and there should not be an expectation that the board is going to respond to those emails in a collective manner. We cannot discuss any material board business in an email or even in a social media string. And so I think that policy just helps reinforce, you know, that expectation. And so, you know, it's probably better in some respects, if someone wants to reach out to a board member one-on-one, you know, if they're looking for more of an interaction or discussion, because when we all get together, you know, we have to be in a public setting like this, we can't do that, you know, in an email setting. And it's really not fair for any other members of the public who aren't privy to that dialogue either, so that's why we don't do it. Policy CBI-R, Evaluation of the Superintendent. Policies with a dash R, whenever you see one of those, that has to do with a specific procedure. And in this case, when we got together earlier in the 2020, I should say, we talked about putting forth or tweaking the evaluation process for the superintendent so that there's a self-assessment component to that. And I think in all of our respective professional workplaces, we have self-assessments that feed into the evaluation process and make it a much more valuable two-way street, if you will, when we're evaluating employees. And our superintendent, you know, is the only employee that the board is directly responsible for, so to speak. So I think moving forward, that will be helpful, you know, and make it a much more meaningful process for all of us. Okay, policy EB, Workplace Safety Program and Joint Loss Management Committee, EBB, School Safety. So what we're doing with these, we're basically creating a new EBB, which is replacing the JIL that's being rescinded. And the new EBB is replacing the old B policy, the old EB policy. Have you ever heard that old Abbott and Costello skit, Who's on First? That's what this kind of sounds like. But basically, again, due to some legislative changes, we're rearranging some of these policies so that they comply, and streamlining some things as well to eliminate some redundancies. We're getting there.
You're doing great.
GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal History Records Check. We last revised our policy two or three years ago. The new policy, I think, organizes the information a little bit better. I think the other thing it does that's new is that it more specifically incorporates substitutes and bus drivers into the background check, criminal history check process, and also, you know, explicitly states that only a superintendent, you know, can review results of a background check from a privacy standpoint. I think that's an important piece, that information is not just floating out there for anyone to look at. GBCE, Training and Information Relative to Child Sexual Abuse Prevention. That's an additional piece. Last year, we had a bunch of revisions to our harassment policies, and this is just kind of an additional piece to that, that, you know, dictates that employees have to be provided with information and materials and training related to this subject so that they know how to proceed and they're educated if they have, if they ever have to address a situation. Okay, we're almost there, I think. JCA, Change of Class or School Assignment, Best Interests and Manifest Hardship. This combines the old policy GJCA and GEC into one new policy. So GEC is being rescinded, and this GCA will now take the place of that and combine it with JCA. And as often happens, you know, this is due to legislative changes, best interests and manifest hardship were addressed separately as two separate processes before, but now, if those types of situations arise, they can be addressed, you know, in one policy. Finally, JL CJ, Concussions and Head Injuries. There are some new pieces to this regarding return to learning. You know, if an athlete has suffered a head injury, there's a policy in place related to, you know, returning to learning and getting back into the classroom as well. And I think this is something that our esteemed athletic director has also looked at, I believe, and given a thumbs up to, so I think that we're, we're in good shape with that one as well. So I think that's it. There's a lot there. Anyone's welcome to shoot me an email if they have any questions or want to discuss any of these in more detail.
Hold on, sir. Thank you. So all in favor of accepting the first reading and rescinded, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Moving on to action items. I need a motion to accept the ABC Committee Report, please.
Make a motion to accept the ABC Committee Report.
I'll second Carrie's motion.
Advisory Budget Committee, any discussion around accepting the report? All right. All in favor of accepting the Advisory Budget Committee Report, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Motion to approve the proposed 2021, 22, 20, sorry, 2021, 2022 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2021 dash 2022 budget.
Thank you, Ed. Do I have a second?
I'll second Ed's motion.
All right. Scott, on Carrie on that one, so any discussion on accepting the budget?
I would like to just make one comment, because I think it, you know, got lost in the weeds in the earlier discussion. But as Russ pointed out, we, the very beginning of the process, we're looking at a nine to 10% increase in the budget. And, you know, indeed, the administration and the board through the administration, you know, went and asked each department and the principals of the buildings to really dig in and see what we could do to cut it down. And eventually, we got to the point where, you know, the actual operating budget, you know, is just under 3%. So a lot of work really did go into that. Each and every department head came back and made sacrifices, and were willing to make sacrifices. All of our administrators even offered to not take a raise, which is just amazing. And it just, you know, it follows suit with the unselfish attitude that everybody in the district has had, you know, teachers and non-teachers alike, to make things happen the right way this school year, you know, in the face of this pandemic. And, you know, there were a lot of initial costs related to the pandemic that, you know, we looked at, and most of those, you know, we ultimately put to the side so that we wouldn't burden the taxpayer with that, not knowing where things are going to be. And so I really want to, you know, tip my hat to everybody that was involved in the process that took what at the beginning was a very daunting task it seemed, and made it into a very workable budget. And again, I think each and every person involved was willing to make sacrifices, so thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Any other comments from the board? All right. Thank you, Scott. All in favor of approving the 2021, 2022 budget, please say aye.
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 Aye. unanimous. Motion to approve the proposed 2021, 2022 default budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2021, 2022 default budget.
I'll second Scott's motion.
Carrie, we've talked about this, these budgets quite a bit, so they were presented earlier, processes, superintendent and staff present the budget now, as of now, accepting that these are our budgets for deliberatives coming up in a few weeks. Any comment around the default budget? We talked about this quite a bit. Okay. All in favor of approving the proposed 21, 22 default budget as presented, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Last one, approve proposed 2021, 2022 warrant articles as presented. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2021 dash 2022 warrant articles.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second Ed's motion.
All right. Any discussion about the warrant articles? All right. All in favor of approving the 2021, 2022 warrant articles as presented? Please say aye.
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 unanimous. Thank you. I'm doing a moderator check. Any, any Aaron in the, in the space? Can sort of see that? I wasn't sure, I didn't see his face. Okay, we'll figure that out. We'll work with the town, so the select board using the building, everything that was talked about, more information to come. Informational item, Mr. Recreation Department, Summer Camp sites.
So we had a request from, Scott blew it, right before we went on to break. He was asking if we would be interested in allowing the town to use the Sherber Gym in the summer. in the summer, Monday through Friday, between eight and 4:30 for eight weeks to run a rec show program on. I've actually been involved in a lot of rec programs with a rec counselor in my younger days. And typically, they're done at a school, they have a classroom that has access to a bathroom or a bathroom in that room. They're in that school, they have an outside door that allows them to keep art class and sporting goods, whatever material sort of in. But typically, a lot of that stuff is done outside, picnic tables, kickball, foursquare, whatever it may be. I think that's, I think that's a great idea. I have no issue with potentially giving a classroom. I worry about giving our gym. And I say that because again, from being a rec, person who went to rec or director, what we always liked was on a rainy day, if we could convince the custodian to let us in the gym. And then ninety kids went in the gym and just went crazy, running around and throwing balls and having a great old time. Again, we do our floors over in our gym. Our gym gets a lot of use during the year. I just worry about the wear and tear on the gym floor, having to program in there every day. Now, again, I would assume a lot of it will be outside, but the majority of it, again, when you're going to get materials and supplies and you come in here, you want to play basketball, you're playing inside instead of outside. It's too hot, let's go inside, let's go away from the gym. I would propose that we talk to Matt, we potentially find a classroom, whether it's up here or at the elementary school that has access to an outside door that could be sort of locked and give them that room, and then they have access from that room down to field, skate park, field up here, whatever it may be. So while I'm not opposed at all to the idea of recreation and us helping them by letting us use one of our classrooms or a piece of our facility, I'm not sure giving them the whole Sherbert gym is in our best interest in the wear and tear of that. But that's just for you guys to think about, or can we input that one or direction?
Yeah.
So are we talking about this facility or the Sherb?
Talking about the Sherb.
But there's no classroom at the Sherb, right?
Right, so that's why I think that's a good.
Oh, I got you. So if they were to use classrooms here, would you allow access to the gym here, potentially?
So I, I, what I tried to do was say probably, we just wouldn't let you use the gym. Right, because first, when we're letting them in our building over the summertime, our building is in disarray. If you were in this, in the gym this summer, it was full, it's always full of stuff because it's dripping floors. So we give them a room that they can access from the outside and they have access to that room and that room already, but it's in our building. And so I would think of, just off the top of my head, Ike's room. Right, so we give them Ike's room, we clear Ike's step out, and they have access from the outside to get in, and they can get in and out, but they don't have to come into the school and use any other classroom. The elementary school, I would have to be a little more creative with Matt to think about what that would look like.
Thoughts or questions?
So if they're using a room up here, then we're allowing them to have access to the fields, baseball fields, soccer field, stuff like that, to do their activity. And if it's a rainy day, then we can plan something inside a classroom.
We're planning inside the classroom.
What do you think, Scott?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just wondering, I mean, I, I kind of like them using the Sherbert gym. I like the, you know, being able to share back and forth, but what if they took on, you know, the responsibility of, of some of the maintenance on the floor for using the gym? I think it would be good for the town's kids to use that gym because we probably don't store things from the elementary school in there because you'd have to push them down the hill all the time. Am I wrong in thinking that, Russ?
So in the summertime, like our chairs and our tables and stuff, some of that gets stuffed from in there. And depending on what they're doing for cleaning down there, they may empty locker rooms and storage classes. But no, it doesn't pull necessarily like our furniture from our classrooms.
I mean, could they, could we work out a deal where they, I mean, these rec programs are charged money, a lot of them, where they, because of their, they're using our Sherbert and they can participate in helping with the floor maintenance?
You can sort of ask a question.
Yeah, my.
I just, I hate to see the building be vacant all summer if we could put kids in.
Yeah, I'm with you on that. I think if we can have a viable solution, not our solution, a viable plan for the floor that Matt V, our facilities guru, is comfortable with, I'd like to, it's early on, so let's just talk about it. But I'd love to, I'd love to be able to see the kids using that building in the summer. If we can do it in a reasonable way to what our responsibilities are, because if you saw this place in the summer, it's trash, whenever, all the floors are getting stripped, it's quite something. So I'm with you, I'm with you, Andy, if, if we can explore that and have, come to something that Matt and his team would be comfortable with.
I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, I think it's a, this is a, this is a community service that's being offered, right? I mean, it's, it's great all around for people, and I have to think that a lot of families would take advantage of that opportunity to have something right there in town. And, I mean, I, we've got lots of fields that, I, I guess the Sherb is ideal because you've got the outdoor basketball courts right there. And maybe part of the contingency is for using the gym. It's just a rainy day sort of plan only, or if it's, you know, some heat wave that makes it intolerable to be outside all day. But I think part of that plan is also using Dewey Beach and other parts, you know, other things within the community. So I don't envision they would be in our gym all day long, every day. And, and also too, I would probably treat it, just say, look, this is a pilot, this is the first year, we want to cooperate to the extent we can. It's town property, no matter what, right? So I'd say use it to our advantage and let's be as cooperative as we can to find a solution that works.
All right, we have some reasonable feedback for next step. Then we can just have a plan that everybody's happy with and hopefully have lots of kids down there.
We've got plenty of time.
Very supportive of rec and wherever we can share the resources. CIP communication plan.
So I don't know if Carrie or Andy want to talk about this, but we met the other day, January seventh, we talked about communication. A piece of that communication, a draft of that is on your desk, just so you can look at. We do have a mail that went out, should be out this week, I mean, it'll be in the mailbox today, tomorrow, or Thursday. We talked about the Zoom meeting, but I don't know if Andy or Carrie want to talk anything else or anymore about sort of our ability to communicate with our community in this COVID time.
I, I wasn't at that meeting, so I'm not going to speak of the communication plan that you and Carrie and the other team members spoke of.
Yep, so the idea was really just to kind of think holistically about what we needed to do between the now and the March vote, to make sure that we give everybody a fair chance and opportunity to have access to information. So, you know, recognizing that not everybody in the community has access to internet or our website or may not choose to go there, what other ways can we reach the community that way? So we talked about the different modes of communication and then just established a plan. John's, you know, works diligently about trying to figure out what our deadlines are and how to back into those and what we would need to do in order to make sure that we, you know, we are doing due diligence to, to put everything out in front of people so that they can make it before decision.
Thank you. I think we covered a lot tonight with some of the different factors, like the letter from Commissioner of Education about third for the potential money, the state fire marshal, town fire chief, consultants on the list, it's a couple pages on the site. So I think we had some pretty thorough discussion on what's ahead. So just getting to everybody who's not watching these or attending the meeting for talking about it, making sure they're getting truthful, accurate information and numbers, I think it's great and look forward to supporting it if we can with that work. Thank you for the heavy lift to the CIP members in this challenging year for that. I'd like to keep us moving forward with the motion, one motion for the AP manifest, a second for the payroll manifest. Do you have a process? I just stared at Scott, he looks away. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve AP manifest 2021 dash 12, $101,192.18, and 2021 dash 13, $40,197.5.
Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
I'll see.
No, Carrie got him on that one, just there. Nice sweep. All right, any discussion about the manifest? All right, all in favor of approving the manifest as listed by Ed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. unanimous. Andy, you're doing well participating remote, that's good. Looking for a motion for payroll manifest, please. One fell swoop.
I'll make a motion for payroll manifest 2021 dash 12, $242,428.46, 2021 dash 13, $314,994.80, 2021 dash 13.1, $6,126.35, and 2021 dash 14, $511,815.40.
Hold plate, sir, do I have a second?
I'll second Ed's motion.
Got them there quick. All right, any discussion about the payroll manifest? All in favor of approving the payroll manifest as presented by Ed? Please say aye.
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 All in favor. unanimous. We have just a couple items left. Public forum in accordance with policy B, E, H, three minutes to speak your piece from the, one, two, three, five folks that have been with us all these hours. Seeing none, we're going to keep moving. I added a, one more agenda item for correspondence. Part of taking criticism as an elected board member in any town sometimes can require some thick skin. And in Sunapee, in my opinion, you have to have extra thick skin. But I wanted to call attention to some board correspondents, semi-public, which is why I have to bring it forward, with our budget advisory committee with accusations from Christopher Whitehouse.
Chris.
That started, well, I'm going to give you the short summary, there's a lot to it. Called me a liar on multiple occasions, accused me of engaging in class warfare, accused me of declaring war against the poor and the elderly, accused me of racism, accused me of unethical conduct and violating a town ethics policy, accused me of lying for personal gain, accused me of ripping the town apart, and accused me of crapping on citizens to get what I want. So my reply was I emphatically deny these egregious and baseless attacks. You have every right to disagree with my actions and voice your concerns. However, the most recent email took an unprofessional and unfortunate turn when you decided to engage in a tirade of personal attacks and insults. So highly unfortunate. So some of the fallout from this, very upsetting for me to feel threatened, it's kind of overwhelming. When you add other commentary on Facebook, I have had multiple interactions with our attorney to get guidance. I felt I had to talk to work so they knew what was going on, so I had to share what was going on, what I was accused of, and assure them that that wasn't true. I feel I have to come before the community and assure you that none of these attacks have any merit or are true. I think it's disgusting and unfortunate. My last comment, I would say, I'm just, I'm anxious because it's a bit overwhelming to go through this experience, so I understand my fault, my voice is shifting. So I did gain something. I gained two, a couple things. So yes, I stand as you accused me of personal gain. I gained an insight into the nastiness that can happen, given it a little, we call it town. And I've gained a deeper resolve to volunteer for our little town. The board has anything you want to say? I'm upset, I'm in a stop clock.
Well, sorry that you have to take the brunt of what's actually a whole board. Could you speak for us, a whole, of this whole board? So it's not just an attack on you, but it's an attack on everything that we're sitting here trying to accomplish. And I myself take offense to the words that was used on that. I, being my prior career, just looked into it, you know, for different things like disorderly conduct, criminal threatening, there's all kinds of things that was popping into my brain reading that one, somebody can just throw out, just out lots. It's really disappointing to see somebody stand in a forum like that and then use the emails or Facebook or that for a community, to use that for such a bashing, which is just uncalled for. It's not right. And the word that I used and then picked up through my career is it's taunting. And I'm sorry that you have to face that for this board as a whole. And thank you for continuing to lead in the professional manner that you do, and we appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, let's look at agenda items for next meeting. So I always like when we get to this time of year, as a taxpayer, to know the important dates. So they've been set a few different times tonight, so you can check my work, all right? We have an info session planned for January 20th on Zoom, so people can ask questions about the project. Question and answer, we're going to be available. The second info session is February 2nd, uh, February 17th. Two important dates as taxpayers, two of the more important, February 1st for deliberatives for the school, that's going to be here, as Mr. Olden explained, we're going to work with the town and have the same format both nights, we're going to work with Aaron, the moderator. If you're present on campus, then your vote counts. If we have overrun to what fits in here for COVID restrictions, we're going to use the boards and the, and the classrooms, we can really leverage that. So February 1st for school, February 2nd for town.
Just gives the town, the towns second to the school this year?
Yep, traditionally.
It did swap about three or four years ago. Until then, it was Tuesday and Wednesday, it was county Tuesday, it was Sunday. Hey, because somebody decided they wanted to, or somebody lined up that the school moved to Monday.
Yeah, so we're Monday, they're Tuesday, and then we'll have a presence on their meetings regarding the road warrant. That's just, you know, no cost to the taxpayer change for the school addition if it's approved. We have a March 9th voting day, I believe, this year. We have a school board meeting on February the 3rd. So some of us get to have the Monday, the Tuesday, and the Wednesday. What's great at that Wednesday school board meeting is we can talk about what happened Monday and Tuesday, both on the town side and the school side. So that's a busy, that's a heavier lift week, lots of time in the, in the gym for us. And then March 9th, I think I covered all of it. Anything else you can think of?
So well, an overview for the February board meeting of the voting session, as you said, we'll be bringing you our suicide prevention plan and our adjustment counselors to leave a lot to you when I'm speaking to that. And on the top of my head, I hope that's all that we have.
Lots of, lots of quality time together, team. And we're, and we'll be supportive with what the town has for them as well, with their meetings in preparation. So we've got a plan, we've got a lot of meetings coming up. Unless you have anything to add, I'd like a motion.
Yep, just one quick thing, since Aaron didn't come tonight, can we potentially just ask him to give us an email, I guess at this point, summary of what the expectations are for deliberative sessions in terms of what is allowable versus not allowable and how that's managed? So again, you know, as discussed last board meeting, when we had the deliberative last year, there was just a part of it that I think went down the road that it should never have in a deliberative session, from my understanding. So I would just like those rules set forth and really clear as to what you will allow versus not per the procedural rules.
Surely we'll reach out to him again.
Okay, thanks.
Are we still looking for a moderator or is he going to?
Well, I think my impression, I'm looking, looking this way.
I feel the buzz tone.
No, I, my, my last understanding was there was, you know, tonight we were going to give it a try with him remote and doing the explaining. I'm still under the impression that we can respect his preference for location. I'm still under the impression that we can respect his preference for location, still have to moderate both the town. Is that still current?
So if he is not comfortable moderating in person, then I would need moderating in school.
Okay.
If he's not comfortable doing the house, Sean Carroll would be there.
Okay, great, great, I'll step behind. Super.
That's good. Thank you.
We did have, Aaron was here Friday, we met Friday around 3 o'clock. We went through the proposal, here and showed the setup, talked about the room. And he seemed satisfied with everything that was going on. Again, I don't, I sent him a reminder this morning, so I'm not sure, something must have came up. But before we touch on it and see if we get some information, and thank you, Josh, for stepping in for just.
Yeah, I just think the important thing to remember about deliberative sessions is moderator, it's set, actually, rules they want. But the community members in the audience, the public, can override anything anyway. So the, interestingly enough, it doesn't actually affect the outcome, it's all what the community decides. But if by a majority vote, they say they want to do something, then that's the way the people, and I don't think it's a majority of people there. It's great that, whatever it is. But that's just something for all, so no matter what, whether it be your area, or Sean, or whatever deliberative session you're at, the public always has the final say of the vote. So if there's issues that are going on, anybody's welcome to elaborate, say, I don't like, I think we should stop and move on, and I don't call for a vote to affect, then you can make that happen.
Yeah, so I guess just, interestingly, so last year, like, I don't know if it happened the way it should have happened, but there was, so basically, there was a presentation given, it was challenged by the audience, and then I think it ended up in a debate between the moderator saying, you have to challenge me or something. And I can't remember exactly how it played out, but it just seemed a little unruly for a formal meeting setting. So if there is a way in which that's supposed to happen, it would just be good to know what that is so that we follow those steps, however they're supposed to occur, as opposed to a debate between the moderator and whomever in the audience is speaking out.
Yeah, and there was a sort of guidelines of the use of the passes, or to achieve.
Yeah.
I think the expectation is that we're going to try to look at that and either, maybe I'm going to get a problem trying to release user or have to hand out something like that, and he has, he has the same idea, he just usually has the whole legal book to go with it. So we, I think clarifying that certainly, but that's, it's almost the intention of the deliberative, because there should get all the motions out hopefully. But yes, there should be a change. At the end of the day, it's the people who need the moderator who must be right in some way.
That by itself was insightful, so as much as you can keep us informed, I just think roll forward with Aaron and his insight to you. You know, you can share things with us as long as we don't state an opinion, we can all get an email of information. Anything that you want to share along the way would be fantastic.
My expectation at this point is he would decide probably the week before whether or not he's all comfortable. They're going to get, or they're going to come on.
Super.
But at that one time, it'll obviously be packed with, and also easier, but.
Yeah. Thank you for volunteering, David.
I don't say no, we don't.
Not at all.
Thank you for that skill, more opportunities. All right, looking for a motion to adjourn, school board meeting at 7:21. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Andy closes that one. Thank you, thanks, Andy.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.